7:30, shall we call this meeting to order?
Sure.
So it appears as if we're missing Cindy, so we will seat Robert in her place. And we have a quorum. So let's proceed with the first item, which is, and if I mangle your name, I apologize, Che Tiernan, appellant for Four Deer Run Road.
Yes, sir.
So will you come sign in?
Sure. Should I sit as well?
Yes. Okay, you want to present your case?
Sure. I didn't realize that's how it worked. My name is Che Tiernan, and I purchased a home here in Woodbridge over the summer at Four Deer Run Road, located on the corner of Deer Run Road and Rimmen. It's what I would call a handyman special or a tear down. It's a small ranch, set really nice to the back of the lot. It has a swimming pool, and it's something that we would like to move into as a family, and to do so, we'd like to add an addition. So you can see some existing photos in your packet of the current condition, and then I did a hand sketch of a second story that I'd like to add, to kind of turn it into what I would call a Center Hall Colonial, which would sort of match the neighborhood in a sense. It'll have a nice return detail because it will keep the garage footprint. This would increase the square footage of the home, and also update the exterior appearance. Is that okay?
Okay.
Is that a good sentence or presentation, sorry?
Terry, do you have any comments you want to add on this?
Sure. This application comes to you under your regulations that we describe as 4.1.1, which is an increase in bulk. As I understand the applicant's proposal, he does not seek any additions to the building in front yard, side yard, or rear yard, but only adding a second floor to the building. This requires, under our regulations, your permission, as opposed to a granting of a variance. And I think the distinction is rather extraordinary, because your permission, you get to use your judgment. In the variance, his obligation is to demonstrate some sort of hardship having to do with the land, and all those are very, very difficult to achieve. So I think that if you'll take a look in your imagination on the neighborhood, it's not untoward to have two-story, single-family houses in that particular neighborhood. And so that's, you know, it fails in the, I guess, in the side yard, the Deer Run Road address, it's too close to the road to have it considered two front yards. His property is blessed with having two front yards as opposed to one, which is the normal condition.
And that's a good point. I believe it's an existing footprint that was built prior to the setback conditions that were implemented in the '60s. And I'm about a couple feet short on a 75-foot line, and maybe a little bit further from 125-foot center line. And that was also a very good point, Terry, that I'm only asking to take the existing footprint higher, not spill out into those lines that have already been created. And I'd also do a majority of the work myself. I'm a licensed and insured general contractor based out of New Haven. I've been working for about 12 years here in town. I've done some other projects similar in scope in other neighborhoods, and also a pretty large addition here in Woodbridge as well a couple of years ago.
Are there questions?
Any commentary from any of these adjacent property owners?
We're conscious that public notice has been given to the neighbors. We've got to...
And there's, are you a neighboring property owner?
I am.
Which way?
On the yellow farmhouse.
Yellow?
No, no, I just live in the neighborhood.
Yellow farmhouse across the street?
Yes.
With the red barn?
Mm-hmm.
Awesome house, I love your porch.
Do you want to...
My question is, is my question about you?
Yeah, I was going to say, we should ask our questions of Che, and then if we have, then we can invite you to come up and add your comments.
Okay, great. Some people have any questions.
And so, yeah, it appears as if we don't have any further questions. So do you want to come sign in, state your name, and...
Should I yield my seat and step aside?
Would you yield your pen?
Maybe. Nice to meet you.
My name is Victoria Corleas. I live at 120 Rimmen Road, which is across the street. This property has been an eyesore for a number of years. It's completely overgrown, you can't even see the property anymore. So we welcome a renovation to the property. I was concerned because I know that you have renovated houses in and around New Haven with great repute, I note, but I wasn't sure whether or not you were renovating this in order to flip it, or whether you were, I was interested in the fact that you said you wanted to live there.
Can I answer, or can we have open communication?
It's just a comment, we don't, it's not a...
It's a great question, because I actually bought the property to buy it, fix it, and sell it, as I did my last home at Derby Avenue in Orange about three years ago when we moved out of New Haven, where I'm a pretty lifelong resident. But my wife has decided that that's going to be our forever after home. And we have two children, so I snuck them into that photo that I presented to the group here as a sympathy vote, in a sense, to raise them here in town. I have several other friends who have kids here as well in Woodbridge.
So having raised our children here, it's a good community, and this is a property that needs attention, so it's a, you were being generous when you said it was a tear down.
So before you go, are there any questions for her? No questions?
Thank you.
If I'm given permission, I'd start right away, just to help with the eyesore.
Is there anyone else here to comment on this? Okay, so move, we close?
Yeah.
Okay, and I'm trying to recall the procedure now, and we move on to the next one, and then we will vote on this at the end, okay?
Okay, wonderful.
So you're welcome to stay?
Thank you guys for your time.
Yeah? Okay. So next, we have Justine Weinberg. You want to sign in and state your name?
Can't quite multitask. My name is Justine Weinberg. I am looking at the space on 378 Amity Road. I'm looking to convert it into a luxury spa for my current high-end clientele. Currently, it was a retail space up until, I actually don't know, when was it, every time?
About a year ago.
About a year ago. And the biggest concern is the change of use of the building, to make sure that there's no heavy traffic, so I just...
You have...
What's a lash extension?
Yes, absolutely. So I've been an esthetician and a lash specialist for 12 years. Lash extensions is a luxury service. It's a service that takes anywhere between two and four hours sometimes for the initial application. My clientele is paying anywhere between $200 and $400 for a full set, and they're coming in anywhere between two and four weeks for fills. So it's actually, it's not like your nail salon, where they're coming in and out whenever they want. This is strictly appointment only, and my client range is anywhere between the age of 20 to 75, but a majority of them are between the ages of 40 to 75.
So you cut people off at 75, that's it, Doug?
What's that?
You cut them off at 75?
No, I'm just saying, that's generally, that's a majority of my clientele. No worries.
So maximum during a day of business could be 35 customers, right?
Up to 35, yes, yeah.
And again, Terry, do you have a comment on this?
Sure, I'd be happy to. I think it's important to understand the history of the parcel. As far as I've been able to determine in our records, in 1969 or so, and Mr. Coyne, I know is the owner of the properties here, perhaps can speak more poignantly to this, but as far as I've been able to determine, in 1969, it was a residence where the individual refinished furniture and fixed antique stuff. It then has been a, was converted about 1969, 1970, into a series of retail establishments, some of which you will all remember. Most recently, The Red Barn, before that, Coyne's, all gift stores selling retail things. We've had numerous times, the previous incarnations of this board have received applications for use of the garage that's associated with this, with The Red Barn, with this property. Somebody wanted to live in it, that was denied by this board. Somebody wanted to create another business in the garage, in the accessory building, that was denied. There was a sign, most recently in 1990, that was held over for many months, discussed at great length, and apparently declined, this board declined to grant that variance. It is a longstanding, non-conforming use in the single-family zone residency. Our regulations, our laws in the state of Connecticut require us to honor that non-conforming use, even though the goal of our regulation is to have our non-conforming uses become conforming, but they don't do so by the mere vacancy of the non-conforming use. So the question that's in front of you is an interesting one. If we were to have a retail use of some kind, and I understand there's a portion of your business that you're proposing to have retail, the service portion of your business creates a point of judgment for this body about whether or not you wish to consider that the same intensity as the previous use. And I think it's an interesting judgment call. I think that you're not allowed to expand that non-conformity, you're not allowed, because if you consider it, you know, and it's difficult really actually to change it, but I think, you know, it's a, it's always been a very sweet spot in Woodbridge, where from The Red Barn or The Blue Check, you know, if you want to get to Town Hall, you get directions that involve both of those places on how to get here. So I think it's quite an opportunity in terms of location, and I don't imagine that it's in anybody's interest in Woodbridge to have an empty building. So with all setting all that, I think that's the downside, the description of what's in front of you. I think that we could use an idea from you about what sort of, how many visitors you would have, how often, how many employees that you have, how often, how many parking spots you have. These are all things that this body can use to assist you.
Okay, yeah. And I would like to add, because I know the change of the building, there would be no change in adding to the building. I just want to make that very clear. If anything, maybe a fresh coat of paint, make it, you know, a little more youthful, and brighten it up a bit, but nothing crazy. I'm not going to paint it purple, I would never do that. I think that's tacky. But also, I do want to mention, I did go to the Quinnipiac Health, and I sat down with John there and spoke to him, and I brought exactly the floor plan that you have in front of you. And he said the only changes that we would need to make to the building are very simple, and that would just be add a couple hand sinks in the stations, and it's very easy to do. And as far as employees, it's myself, my sister, and another. There's three lash artists currently right now. I'm looking to hire maybe two other lash artists, and generally, we're taking usually four clients a day, so about 30, there'll probably be about 35, 40 people in there throughout the day. I hope that answers your question.
Other questions?
Yeah, what was the math again? You're taking how many?
So if we're, if it's for myself, so it's myself, I'm taking four clients a day, and I also, I will add, I will not be working the same days as my sister, I'm going to be in rotation with her, and that's just because somebody needs to run the business and make sure everything is, you know, running efficiently. But it would be her and one other girl for sure, up to four clients per technician. So that's five and five, 510, 15. That's 15 throughout the day, just myself and two other technicians. And then if I add two other people, yes, sorry, I should have clarified that maybe a little bit, because the technicians won't be leaving throughout the day.
And how many parking spaces are there?
Um, no, I, do you know that?
Do I need to sign in or anything before I add any comments here?
Yeah. You're going to speak, yeah.
Why sign it, Terry? Basically, the history, this property's had a commercial use for over 45 years.
Since 1969, absolutely, right.
So it's not...
Right. And I think that it's important to note that the, that there's no expansion of that, that in terms of square footage. We haven't asked her yet what she wants to do in the garage, so that's a good question you can ask them, you know, when she next comes up here, what's the use of the garage? You know, signage has always been problematic at this address, by the way, and so that's another good question to ask about them when, but I think that historically, they're four square in a legally non-conforming commercial use. We tend to parse things in Woodbridge, so I don't know that it's just commercial use. We have had other applications that have been considered the spot, that after we've described the process to get approved, they haven't been forthcoming. So during your discussion period, I'd be happy to discuss those sorts of things.
So a few questions that were raised, number of parking spots. So across the front of the building, there is at least two, three, four, five, six, seven. There's an easy eight that are like right in front of the building, that's where people most often park. But then there's a shed sort of next to it, and quite a few years ago, we kind of leveled some space there, and it's gravel, and there is another, there's got to be another eight spots over there, and that's, there's plenty more than I think that, but that's easily. Another thing I just thought I'd add is, so over the years, there really has been a number of businesses in there. My dad bought the property in the mid-'80s, and I purchased it from him about five years ago. So throughout the years, we operated The Red Barn, which was selling gifts and toys and books, and we had an antique co-op in there, where the entire building was essentially rented out in little squared-off spots, people brought in their antiques. We had the Yarn Barn on the second floor. Inter Award operated out of there, so closed on the second floor. And I think I'm forgetting one in all of those. So they've all sort of been in the same vein, and I realize Justine's use, Inter's is more service, and I would argue a lot of things are service, such as what I do, professional services, or a lawyer. There has been a lot of people kicking tires in that building, and it just didn't seem realistic, what they, what they were thinking they could get approved anyway, so those kind of came and went naturally. The only other thing might be helpful to add is, the customer count, I can speak to for as long as we owned it and ran it as a retail location, you know, because you are keying things into register, so you got a customer count per day. So our customer count usually topped off at around 40 per day. I mean, when The Red Barn was kind of operating, which it was for quite a few years, that's about what it was. Helen Eisenberg was in there for the last couple of years, and I'm not sure her numbers were much different than that, but I don't, I can't speak to her accounts. So it does not strike me as more cars are going to be coming and going, or it's going to be more disruptive or something for the neighborhood. I can't think of anything else, but if...
What, I got a quick question. What are the hours of operation going to be?
So basically, do you really think? It will vary on the day, but usually, I start business around 10, finish around 6 o'clock most days, and weekends, probably anywhere between, you know, 8 or 9 a.m., because usually clients like to come early on a Saturday, and then go do their errands, and finish around 4 o'clock, 3 or 4 o'clock.
And to the question that Terry brought up, are there considerations about signage?
Yeah, actually, I did want to talk about that. So whatever you guys need me to do as far as signage, I'll do it. I don't have, I have a logo and everything, but I don't know what the restrictions are, so...
So they're fairly severe, fairly restrictive. Woodbridge on Amity Road doesn't seem to like signs.
Okay.
We've heard a lot about signs on Amity Road and from businesses, and I think it just, as a reality for yourself, you know, you'll have more problems with signs than almost anything else, interestingly enough.
That's not a big issue for me, because...
If you thought of, are you making any use of the garage?
I actually, I haven't even thought about the garage, I think...
Would it be fair that you would store goods there?
Yes, yes.
Are there any other questions for Justine? Not for me. Okay, thank you. Is anyone else here to comment on that?
Yes.
Want to sign in and state your name?
Okay, well, I don't have a pen, so I'm not going to sign. That's okay, that's okay. My name is Paula Esposito, and I own the property at 382 Amity Road, which is Blue Check, and I welcome her to the neighborhood. I think it'd be great to have the building not empty and have people in there, and I'd like to get my eyelashes done too, so. So I think it's a great idea.
So are you allowed to currently take a left turn out of there?
Yes.
Yep. You are.
You know, in researching the property, you know, there's some old photographs of the building in the file, and you know, that parking lot used to be a road, and you could turn in from Center Road into the property, and apparently...
When did they curb it?
Some years ago, but apparently there were numerous accidents. Can you imagine having a driveway that close to that intersection?
Yeah.
People would be confused as how to go, so...
Okay, do we have any further questions on this? So we'll close this part, and we will move on to our discussion of the first property.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. You're welcome to stand.
Yeah, you guys are welcome.
Yeah, you guys, because we're going to discuss that, yeah, okay. So comments on the first property, on the Deer Run?
It seems that he's not expanding the footprint of the property, and just looking at the pictures, the building really is a nice choice. Sounds like a very big improvement for the neighborhood. A neighbor who lost his recent favor, that seems like a reasonable proposal.
Other discussion?
I completely agree. The neighbor said best.
So do we have a motion to approve? Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor? Okay. And then for the second property, I actually, for most of the things that we end up having hearings on, it's really about, you know, changes in the footprint, which mean that you have to talk about the land or the hardship. What are the statutory considerations we have to consider in terms of this? Is this similar to building upward and it's asking permission, or...
Not at all. This is yet another thing, and most communities would describe this as a use variance, except our modest regulations don't have that as a concept. But in adjoining New Haven, use variances are like candy, that they dis... dispense with, and they rezone properties in New Haven without regard to zoning, quite frankly, but they do it by a series of use variances, which I, I can't, I can't imagine what they might do next. And spawns, I might add, a vigorous litigation business in, in New Haven zoning, and anywhere use variances exist. But I do think there's a standard of care here, and it's filed in our regulations with the best of news for that. We state that any variance, you are asked to state, for the reasons of your any variance, any exceptional conditions, the practical difficulties, or, and I think this is an important "or," unnecessary hardship involved. So I don't think there's any hardship. You know, it's a, it's a non-conforming, you know, retail space that is well settled and, and could be used exclusively for retail in a heartbeat, without, without your attention. I believe that, that you have to assess, assess the similarity of uses to the service provider, and perhaps that you might find that have some, some exceptional conditions or practical difficulties, and not get to the hardship of it, because it's an "or" not a "an." So, I, within your regulations, you know, that's your discussion.
Can you repeat those three again, please?
Sure. You know, it's, it's under your section ten-point-three-point-one, and it says, any variance, you have to state your exceptional conditions, the practical difficulties, or the unnecessary So, in a, a town that did regular use variances, you know, you would be, you would be hearing from three or four members of the bar about this issue, as well as your own attorney. You would have a, a vigorous history of the, of the, of the previous uses, and how they, you know, are demonstratably, you know, similar in, in, in intensity, and use, and, you know, trips, and people. I think we have a, you know, this building's been vacant for a while now, and it would be, it would be a good sense to have it put to good use, this building. On the other hand, you don't want to, you don't want to set yourselves up to, to be able to assess the next one that might come in after this. We have, staff has, has, has received two different inquiries from two different liquor stores that would love to be in that spot. And after a discussion of the use variances, the non-conforming uses, some looking at the geography, not the, you know, not particularly conducive to truck deliveries, that sort of practical things, they, they never made an application. We've had a restaurant express interest in it. I think that the premises is too small for a restaurant, and after a discussion of what it would take to expand this non-conformity into the size that a restaurant might do, might need to thrive, you know, they, they too have not, chosen not to make an application in front of you. There may have been others, I, I don't know. The, I'm sure that any number of professional offices, such as lawyers, real estate agents, might have been interested at one time or another. It, you know, it's got those three things that so very few people have, and that's location, 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 right? It's a very attractive, attractive piece of property.
Were you going to say something about the approval process, though? You mentioned that earlier, as opposed to, you know, you, you sort of were talking as to other, other potential uses, liquor store, et cetera, prior to their proposed process, so was there anything you wanted to add on that here?
Well, I, I think that, that, you know, this is a, in my mind, is an assessment of, of similar uses. You know, I think that, that it doesn't, you know, whereas, you know, trying a liquor store or a restaurant to try to take a similar use to that, in my mind, wouldn't, I couldn't muster that, that construct. The, you know, because there's a, a retail element to her proposal, because her, you know, her services are, are, you know, self-limiting, I, I might add that you, you might find some solace in, in, in recounting in your, your approval, should you be so inclined, as to propose hours of operation, you know, ten AM to six PM, you know, you'd want to avoid the all-night lash salon, right? Wouldn't work well. The, the three service providers, you know, I, I mean, I think this all goes to the intensity of the, of the proposal, and further, you know, protects you in the future for the next thing, if, you know, she may be here twenty-five years, I would hope, but who knows? You just, you know, these are precedent-building things, and, and we have to be careful and mindful of that precedent building.
So then, in a lot of ways, a key issue we're struggling with is if this is sufficiently similar in use to, to be a good variance. It's a fair way to put it.
A, a, yes.
So with that in mind, are there comments, questions from?
Just have a technical question. Is this like a variance on a variance, or does it become a new, like stated as a new, this is like sort of refiled as a new variance?
It, it becomes, it becomes a new use, a lot, a use, it's a use variance, basically. It becomes a new use that, that came after, what came after the Red Barn, you know, it's like.
You can't, you can't expect just another similar business to a Red Barn to come here, and it's a commercial site, and.
Well, we did have, we did have forty years of similar things.
No, no, what I'm saying, but apparently hasn't been able to get tenants of that type had it available for a while. I'm just saying it, it seems like, like a reasonable commercial use, and, and, you know, this is, it has, as I mentioned, almost a fifty-year history of commercial function, so it's not like we're going from a, a house that was a residence there and putting a business into it, it's not quite that kind of.
That, that would be completely different.
No, no, so I'm just saying, it's, it's, it seems, it seems like, to me, it seems like a reasonable proposal.
Other thoughts, comments, discussion?
I'll say a comment, which is that I don't think the difference is significant enough between what was and what she's proposing, number one. Number two, and more importantly, the disruption on the neighborhood is minimal, given that the traffic is going to be similar to what has been there for a number of years. And third, across the street is the Blue Check, definitely, which has way more people. So, to me, this is, this is an easy choice.
Right. Yeah, I'd also make a quick comment that the hours of operation.
Yeah.
It's not, nothing crazy.
You, you might want to, as you, as you talk about this, you know, put in, as part of your decision, your recounting of the hours of operation, if it's important to you, to assess its intensity.
And we could, we could, if you're concerned, we could put some limits on it. Be reasonable, it's not dangerous.
There's a, there's a downside to all of that, and, and the only downside is that, that, well, there's several downsides, but the big downside is that we try to encourage people to imagine themselves as being successful. Because what's really difficult, the next zoning hearing for this applicant, if she's approved, starts her business as in, as, and is fantastically successful, is having to come back to you and ask for an increased amount of service providers, an increased amount of, of hours of operation, and, and that, in our, we've learned at the Town Planning and Zoning Commission, that, that that's a very difficult ask, and so we encourage people to imagine themselves as being successful, so as to set these reasonable limits on the business.
And at least in my mind, I could imagine that, you know, shortly before Christmas or some other period like that, there, there might, yeah, the prom, my kid's not quite there yet, close enough, yeah.
Or weddings?
Yeah.
Weddings, I imagine.
Yeah, so I can, I can, I can easily imagine, and it seems like really the thing is, we're looking at substantially the same in terms of hours, clientele, traffic.
But, you know, it's, that same thing, I mean, can you try to get into the Red Barn at, you know, like Christmas Eve?
Well, that's, that's kind of the point, yeah.
Right, right. So, for all of us late shoppers.
And also, right down the road is the JCC, which is open pretty late itself, so that's a good point.
So, are there, is there other discussion, and do we have a motion?
I'll move. Has somebody else thought? I, I move that we accept this for new use, and leave the hours up to Justine.
Second.
Okay.
Nice. I'll second, he, he's not.
Yeah, no, you're not seated, Ruben.
That's okay, we'd like to hear from you.
Yeah, and any discussion on it, as the way Hank described it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, thank you.
Yours was approved too, you're outside.
Yeah, you was approved while I was chit-chatting with the neighbor.
You missed it!
Thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate it.
You were, you were active, and you missed the bigger part. We're taking it back.
Can I have a copy of?
Speak with full about the video.
All right, well, thank you, guys, I appreciate that. You know, next summer.
See you, welcome.
Okay, so next is approve the minutes for the June meeting. Actually, you know, traditionally, people have abstained. It is worth noting that according to Robert's Rules of Order, you can either vote to approve, deny, or abstain on it as you feel whether or not you are there. But do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the June twelfth meeting? Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
No one opposed, abstained? Okay. And then we have the minutes of the July tenth meeting. And again, do we have a motion to approve?
I have a motion to approve.
Okay. Second. Again, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed or abstained? Is there any other business for this meeting? Okay. Yes, and, um, motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Okay. Any time of the German to eight sixteen thirty.